I'm going to go ahead and call this special session of the Bloomington Common Council to order, seeing as we've got a quorum, and I think everybody else looks ready, too. Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Flaherty? Ruff?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Sossberg?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Assari?
Here.
Thanks. Thank you. So this evening, we have a special session related to final budget approval for things. That's why we're here. So, starting with the agenda summation, first, we're going to hear a report from the Committee of the Whole. A couple of weeks ago, we had a Committee of the Whole discussion around these appropriation ordinances, and so we will hear from the Chair of the Committee of the Whole, which was Councilmember Zulik. Next, we will have three items of legislation, our appropriation ordinances for budget year 2026. We will start with the Civil-City Budget Appropriation Ordinance 2025-11. Then, we will do Appropriation Ordinance 2025-12 for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2026, and then Appropriation Ordinance 2025-13, adopting the budget for the Water and Wastewater Utility Departments for Bloomington, again, for 2026. After those three pieces of legislation, we will have a conversation about elected official salary discussion, which we kind of started last week, and everybody was like, we need to talk about that more. Any notes about council schedule, and then we will adjourn. So, launching right in, the first thing is the report from the Committee of the Whole from a couple of weeks ago. Councilmembers, Zulik.
Thank you. The Committee of the Whole considered the three budget ordinances: Appropriation Ordinance 2025-11, Appropriation Ordinance 2025-12, and Appropriation Ordinance 2025-13, during the Committee of the Whole meeting on September 24, 2025, and makes the following recommendations. Number one, the Committee of the Whole recommends to the council the adoption of Appropriation Ordinance 2025-11. Number two, the Committee of the Whole recommends to the council the adoption of Appropriation Ordinance 2025-12. And number three, the Committee of the Whole recommends to the council the adoption of Appropriation Ordinance 2025-13. And that is the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Zulik. Does anybody have any questions for Councilmember Zulik about her report of the Committee of the Whole? Great, no questions, so we can go ahead and launch into our legislation for second readings.
I move that Appropriation Ordinance 2025-11 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 2025-11, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing the 2026 Civil-City Budget for the City of Bloomington. There's no synopsis.
Thank you so much.
I move that Appropriation Ordinance 2025-11 be adopted.
Second?
Do it.
11.
11.
Thank you. Who is here to present this evening? Go ahead and introduce yourself, and floor is yours.
Good evening, Council. Jessica McClellan, City Controller. I am here tonight to present for the final adoption, the 2026 budget for the City of Bloomington. The DLGF reviewed funds total $110,184,108, and the non-DLGF reviewed funds equal $52,968, I have a little bit more information to share with you about the fund balance. When we first developed the budget and presented the fund balance in the budget book, we had an estimated $11 million deficit between deficit spending and the general fund. And after we made corrections to the general fund, that was reduced to a $9 million deficit spending in the general fund. And the reason for that change is an increase in the revenue in the general fund from property taxes, from $54 million to $55.6 million. And this is due to moving property taxes from the Parks and Rec Fund to the general fund. And we moved property taxes out of the Parks and Rec Fund because there was about $1.6 million in revenues, miscellaneous revenues, in the Parks and Rec Fund that we had not accounted for yet in New World. So, we got that information, added that into New World, and we didn't need the property tax support in the Parks and Rec Fund by about $1.6 million. That increased the revenue in the general fund, thereby decreasing the deficit spending. We also made changes to the spending in the general fund, a combination of decreases due to moving liability insurance, and increases due to COLA increases, and increasing the amount that is going to the sanitation fund. The net of that is an increase in spending of $86,000. So, there is a slight change. That was, no changes from the budget that was presented in the public hearing, but this is just a little bit more information for you about the deficit spending for next year, which is about $9 million, and that is purely from the revenues that we're receiving next year versus the spending that we have planned for next year. And now, I'm going to update you one more time about the planned, the planned cash balance in the general fund at the end of 2026 is $26,161,215. So, that $26 million is 40% of the operating budget. So, we would have 40% reserves of our total operating budget. It's a lot of information. I really appreciate you bearing with me this budget season and asking all of your questions and taking in all this information that I'm sharing with you. I appreciate your concern over many issues that we've come across in the budget, and I look forward to your questions and appreciate your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Controller McClellan? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to ask, and I sent an email about this, but if you could summarize for everybody what our debt situation is, total debt of the city, and what portion is CBU and what portion is the Civil-City? Do you have that in front of you?
Yes. I do not have it in front of me. Just give me one second to bring it up. All right. So, right now, we're going to review the debt obligations that are outstanding for the City of Bloomington, and I apologize for not having this information in numbers in front of you. I realize that would be a lot easier to digest this if you had it in front of you, but I am looking right now at a report that I pulled off the Gateway website. And let me make this report bigger so that I can see it. As of January 1, 2025, the outstanding debt obligations for the City of Bloomington, a total of property tax bonds, general revenue bonds, and TIF bonds is $125,60,000. The total of wastewater, the total outstanding for wastewater is $48,71,900, and the total outstanding for water bonds is $39,827,800, for a total of $249,959,700. And I'm happy to email this all to you. It'd probably be helpful to have some percentages, what percent is total city debt obligations versus utilities. We can do that analysis easily, of course, and kind of look at some different ways to review the debt.
Can I ask a follow-up? In the DLGF, I found a report that said our total debt was $414 million. Does that include the things that were not included in what you just reviewed, or did I look at that report wrong?
$414 million total debt. Let's see. $414 million total debt. If you would show me that report sometime. I'm not able to pull reports on the fly, but I'd be happy to take a look at that and see what that number is. I'm sure we can figure it out.
Yeah, it's in Gateway. If you look at, it should be including Civil-City, Parks, and CBU. So, not just the things that are counted against our debt limit, but all debt, including property as well.
I think there might just be an error. That includes principal and interest. So, our outstanding debt obligation is what I'm, thank you very, very much. Thank you, Mike. That is a list of all of our payments that are due. So, let's see. Usually, when I'm asked what our outstanding debt obligations are, I refer to just our principal balance, and that is a list that includes all the interest payments due with that principal balance. So, I did not quote that amount when I told you. That is not actually on this report, but we can pull those numbers for each bond and include that in a report, too.
I have one more follow-up. Can you comment at all on our debt per capita and how it compares to other cities?
Well, let's see. There are a lot of debt per capita reports on Gateway, and it'll show the City of Bloomington and all the other cities in the state that have debt, and it shows what that rank is and what that debt per capita amount is in the state. Let's see here.
I think Deputy Mayor Knapp had answered a previous email with some figures. I don't know. She wants to jump in, or I can cite her email, but...
Debt is paid from, oh, hi. It starts by figuring out what you're calling debt. So, if you're in that gateway, you can look at the total debt, including Parks and all of those other things. You can look at debt that counts against our debt limit. So, there are different ways of looking at it, but by both of the standards that I think I sent to you, we were pretty much in the middle or in the, at the bottom of the top third ranked by city. And considering that we're the sixth-largest city, the amount of debt we have as a sixth-largest city was considerably lower than if you were looking at, you know, if you were assuming that the bigger the city, the more debt they would have. I can't remember if it was looking at total debt that put us in the sort of, let's call it the 70%, 60% mark, and/or whether it was the other figure that put us halfway in the middle, but it's publicly available, and it does really depend on what you include when you ask DLGF, when you input, what is the debt, whether it's the total debt, the debt that counts against the debt limit, and so on. But not exceptional, in other words, not exceptionally high by any means for either one of those figures.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you for sending the debt information, Controller. I wondered if, so, besides the principal and interest, could you send the amortization schedule as well, so we...
Yes.
Visualize that.
Yes.
For each debt obligation. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Seeing no other questions, we need to go to public comment regarding Appropriation Ordinance 2025-11. If you're a member of the public in chambers and you would like to make a comment about this appropriation ordinance, please make your way to the podium. If you are a member of the public online wishing to make a comment, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab, or you can send a chat message to the host. I don't see anybody moving in chambers. Is there anybody who's raised a hand on Zoom? Okay. Seeing no public comment, we will go ahead and come back. Oh, wait, there is one person who has raised their hand. Let's go ahead and hear from that person. When you're unmuted, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Eric Ost, and I appreciate this opportunity to comment. As Bloomington faces profound financial shifts, especially from state legislation like SEA 1, we must begin with a clear, open discussion of the city's debt profile. While our bond rating is strong and bond debt low, the Department of Local Government Finance places our total outstanding debt at a bit above $414 million. SEA 1 limits short-term bond access, meaning less cash and less credit. Public communication should stress structural constraints, such as the need to strategically layer and ladder bonds for future infrastructure costs, and key debt indicators, such as our debt service rate and its proximity to thresholds that would trigger costly petition processes. Establishing performance indicators for debt management will help us protect critical services and infrastructure over the long term. Transparency, as the Thompson administration has said is a value, means more than posting data and means understandable, making it understandable and accessible. The Controller's goal to meet the public where they are is a great start. It's commendable. To truly be co-creators, council and administration should actively invite public input on budget engagement, making trade-offs visible and using modern tools, such as Notebook LM, to foster ongoing informed dialogue. Perhaps we could formalize public participation by inviting residents to join the fiscal committee or the budget task force. Leveraging community expertise will strengthen our shared path towards fiscal health. Thank you for your service to our community and for all of your good work.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else who's raised a hand on Zoom in the meantime? Wonderful. Okay, let's go to our second Zoom commenter. When you're unmuted, go ahead and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
It's Kevin Keough. I've spent over 45 years as a financial and IT auditor, including being a CPA, a certified internal auditor, a certified information system auditor, and a certified information systems cybersecurity profession. I mention that only to say that I've spent my career looking for the kinds of control failures that can hide in complex financial systems. I'm concerned that the administration still has not provided a clear documented explanation for the so-called macro errors that reduce the projected budget deficit by $2.3 million, a material and significant error. When errors of that size appear between the accounting system and the budget document, the cause and impact should be fully reconciled and shared with the public before this council votes. Anything less leaves both the council and the community in the dark, whether the budget numbers are reliable. I understand that mistakes can happen in data transfers or spreadsheets. What's troubling is the lack of transparency. There has been no reconciliation, no errata sheet, and no technical explanation of how the macros failed or which accounts were affected. From a professional auditing perspective, I would urge the council not to approve the 2026 budget until those explanations can be made public and the corrected figures verified. And I would also add, since I have some more time than I thought I'd have, today's Herald Times, the front page, "The Mayor and City Needs to Cut Spending." Thompson plans to use, and this is the figure, today's paper, $11 million in reserves to balance the budget, which directly conflicts with what the Controller said this evening. So, anyway, I thank you for this opportunity to provide public input.
Anybody else raised a hand on Zoom? Okay. And seeing that there's nobody in chambers, we'll go ahead and return to council now. Are there any councilmember comments or lingering questions in response to public comment? Councilmember Rallo?
Well, I'd like to give the administration the opportunity to respond to these stated discrepancies, reliability of data, and the $11 million in reserves to balance the budget. I mean, it's a charge that puts in question, I think, for the viewing public, you know, what we're voting on this evening, and I would like to give you a chance to respond to that. I think we've gone through it over the past months, but if you'd like an opportunity.
Revenues changed? $54 million to $55.6 million for a total increase in revenues of $1.6 million. Spending in the general fund expenses changed from $65.2 million to $65.1 million for an increase in $86,000 in expenses. There was planned deficit spending of $11.1 million in the budget book, and mainly due to the revenue increase in the general fund. That planned deficit spending is $9.4 million now. There's one table on page 14 of the budget book that states that the expenses in the general fund are $65.2 million, but when we add up all of the legal sheets throughout the budget, that's where we get the budget of $65.02 million, and that's where an error in whatever was used to run the report that made the one table in the memo versus all of the reports that were divided up into all the different departments, there is a little bit of discrepancy between those reports and what the total was in that table, and that's where the macro error occurred. And by macro, all we mean is that very simple Excel program that takes a messy Excel report generated by the computer, does a bunch of formatting, and saves it as an Excel, or as a PDF, just a very simple macro. It works really well if that base report is always exactly the same, but sometimes the program gives us a report that has minor little differences and the macro didn't work right. But we did reconcile every single difference between the general fund in the budget book and the general fund and this adopted budget. We know exactly where every change is, and I presented that to you, and I was happy to do that work. I feel like that is absolutely necessary for you to know before you pass this budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other lingering questions from councilmembers or any comments that councilmembers would like to make about this appropriation ordinance? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I ask the questions that the Controller just went over earlier via email, and she did send me an Excel spreadsheet that laid everything out very clearly, the changes between budget book and what's in the final paperwork. Has that been shared with council or public? Can we do that?
Yes. Yes, you can do that. Yes, it has not been shared with anyone except the requister, which is you.
Okay, so, we can maybe put that, I can share it right now, and we can put that in to add to the packet tomorrow? Okay, I think that'll help.
Other comments related to this appropriation ordinance or lingering questions before a vote? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I have one more, I'm sorry. I meant to ask this last time when the bond council was here, but Bloomington City, Bloomington, has a bond investment-grade rating of AA1. Is that right?
AA or A-. We get rated every time we issue bonds, and it fluctuates.
Okay, and...
But it is investment grade, yes.
Yep, and the Bloomington Utilities has a lower grade. It has consistently, and it's not a reflection of the current. But I think it's got an A rating. Is that correct? I just wondered about...
Rated? You might still be in the rating process for your water bonds. So, Utilities has a water bond in the process right now, and they may be rated, they may not be rated, I'm not sure.
So, it's in process right now?
It's usually something that happens at the end of the bond process. I don't think you've closed on your bonds yet. I don't know off the top of my head what the Utilities bond rating is.
Okay, that's all right.
That's a short answer.
You know, something we can talk about at some point later, but I just wanted to understand in terms of our, you know, debt load, if it has an influence on bond rating. It certainly does in many cases, or what would account for it. So, but we can discuss that at a different time. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other councilmember comments or lingering questions? Okay. I just have one thing that I want to say, which I'm going to make it a little bit of a question, but mostly it's a comment. One of our commenters highlighted the Herald Times article, kind of questioning something that was in it in terms of questioning the city's accuracy of information, but I also want to call out the end of that article cited that there would be a 2% COLA increase or pay increase for non-union employees, but that was what was in the original budget book, but you have changed that to the 2.7%, which is what we had talked about and requested, and I would like that kind of verbal confirmation right now.
Yes, definitely. Between budget hearings and our public hearing earlier last month, it's been changed to 2.7% COLA increase.
Thank you. I actually got a message this morning from a community member who I realized, like, oh, they must have read this and wanted clarification. So, for clarification, that is at least one inaccuracy that was in this article, and I can't tell you if there are other inaccuracies in it, but that was one that stood out to me, and so I did want to make sure to clarify that for the public, that our non-union employees do have a 2.7% increase, which matches inflation for the 2026 year. And that was all I wanted to say. Thank you. So, unless there's other lingering comments or questions from councilmembers, will, oh, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I had a question. Are we constrained to five minutes to debate, or, sorry, to council comment in this period?
That is our, like, what is standard in our code around that. Got it. I think it's five minutes for the first comment, and then a two minutes additional for additional comments.
That's right. Thank you. Okay. So, I would have shared more of my thoughts last week, but I was unable to join the Committee of the Whole. Briefly, I'm not going to be voting in favor of this year's Civil-City budget, because I don't feel like I can in good conscience. Not a decision I make lightly, but it's a vote that's consistent with my values and what I think is right, and I'll do my best to explain. I probably will be a little short on time. It's also a vote about accountability for me, and I think the budget is a very poor accountability mechanism. There are much better avenues through conversation and collaboration, negotiation and agreements, things that have largely proven ineffective in my experience with this administration for 20 months, and I think without real accountability, we won't see real change. And so, that's really the motivating factor. First, I think we are very much failing to meaningfully center or operationalize equity in city government, which is central for me as an elected official. Second, in ways that I think are harming our community, I believe this administration is failing to prioritize and pursue the outcomes we've set through community-driven legislative processes. And third, quite sadly, really, I no longer consistently trust what this administration tells us based on their past actions and a pattern of behavior exhibited throughout their time in office. I'll try to address each a little bit, though, again, I probably don't have adequate time. With respect to equity, for me, that is the defining value of what it means to be liberal, what it means to me to be a Democrat. Virtually all decisions in other policy areas flow from this, and in my view, we simply aren't integrating equity as a value in government in a consistent or meaningful way most of the time. This is actually how I felt my entire time in office, but I actually think we've been making meaningful incremental progress most of the time, and I think this year is the first year I feel like we're actually taking a step backwards. As folks may recall, we negotiated over equity in government last year, and it kind of gave the administration a pass when they said, "We need more time. We're only eight months in. We need to do studies. We need to talk to staff. We need to understand what we're doing. We need to come up with outcomes, expectations, et cetera. We'll come back to you with a plan." Then, we didn't hear anything for nine months until we took a motion and asked them for an update, and we got one paragraph from the deputy mayor saying that they are not in a position to allocate funding or undertake this work at the present time. going on to explain that the Trump administration's opposition to DEI could put us at risk for accessing federal funds. The mayor, corporation counsel echoed these points. I've got to say, I just find these explanations to be wholly inadequate. By all means, use language strategically when applying for grants, naming programs, et cetera. But now more than ever, it's the time to stand up for our values, if they are indeed our values. And indeed, leading cities all over the country are doing just that. I understand the administration's position here, and I'm opposed to it. Second major area of concern is with policy outcomes. Again, community-driven legislative adopted policies. I think those aspects are critical. It's how we actually have city policy, not just individual priorities. I brought this up last year when the mayor was producing a bunch of action plans to inform their budget priorities. I asked how council was going to be involved, how the public was going to be involved, whether we'd approve these. The answers were basically no, we weren't involved, and we didn't approve them. And they're not city policies, they're mayoral priorities, not the same thing. And so the outcomes in our city policies are my compass, and I think we're falling short in many areas, particularly striking cases on both climate action and housing, where the mayor has actually actively opposed or even obstructed implementation of current city policy. To me, that's unacceptable, and there needs to be accountability for that as well. The path to change those is through the legislative and community-involved process, not through opposition or obstruction. A third and final problem is the trust issue. I don't have enough time to go into all the many examples of where I feel like I have not been dealt with honestly. Perhaps one of the more significant is my trust concerns is with when the administration, really in the first months in office, disregarded bond ordinance 202230 and the appropriation ordinance 202301, which appropriated nearly $30 million to be spent solely and exclusively on public safety facilities. Among those planned expenditures, or actually actual expenditures, was the Showers West building for new police and fire headquarters. That's, of course, not how that's buildings being used, arguably a violation of the bond ordinance. I've spoken with our bond counsel about it, and corporation counsel, and city former counsel attorney Lucas, and the mayor, which has informed my view that I think we may well be in violation. There's a lot of things that we negotiated in last year's budget that the administration agreed to do that they, in fact, have not done. So that undermines my ability to think that we can actually productively negotiate to see improvements. Again, I've run out of time to give the many examples that I have. I'd like for us to spend more time in the future working on these structural challenges. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other council member comments after that? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I think this year has been frustrating in many ways because we have ostensibly been working towards outcome-based budgeting, but it has proceeded very slowly and without prioritization of which outcomes are more important than others. I think part of it is, you know, it's not that it's anybody's fault in particular. I think it's just, it's a very heavy lift, and having to kind of organize how we think about expenditures has taken the bulk of the time. And I'm hoping that we will actually get to a point where we can, we can talk about the outcomes we wish to see and how best to use our limited funds to get there. I feel like that really wasn't done this year. And I, again, I'm not sure if that's just because we had to, you know, get some other ducks in a row before we could have that conversation, but I just want to express that I certainly hope the council will be actively involved as we move ahead. And at some point, we have to talk about priorities, not just, we want to see these 200 outcomes because we can't fund 200 outcomes. So other than that, I appreciate the openness with which our new controller has discussed budget processes with us and presented data. And I think there's been a learning curve on her part and on our part as far as what we need and want to see as far as data before we make budget decisions. So I'm hoping that we can, you know, both sides can learn from this, and next year we'll have more of that data upfront rather than, you know, me emailing two days before the vote and getting the data day of the vote. You know, I'm not pointing blame, I'm just saying that it was a little bit last minute this year that I understood the budget well enough that I feel like I can vote on it. So things that, these are things we can improve upon next year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there other council member comments? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the comments so far. So I want to say thank you to the controller. I always really love your presentations and your ability to answer questions, whether you know the answer or not, so I always appreciate that. This is something I've wanted to bring up for a long time, and I think there has never really been a right time for it because it is an awkward conversation, and awkward conversations are difficult. And I think that sometimes making something public is, can feel petty, but I do think this is time. And after councilmember Flaherty's kind of high-level view on trust issues with the administration, I did, I think it's hard to just say something, you know, like, I've lost trust. And I think sometimes examples are important. So I do want to do a dive into an example of why I too, and I think potentially some other council members are lacking trust with this administration. So in late 2024 and early 2025, four resolutions to amend our Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO, in accordance with furthering our city's goals and plans, housing updates, affordability updates, climate updates, were brought before council. Two resolutions passed in 2024 without a fuss. In March 2025, the other two resolutions were brought before council and voted down on introduction. We did not even get a chance to discuss them. The B-Square Bulletin wrote a story that night, one, because it normally does that, write a story, and two, because it was a very out-of-character move for city council. We almost introduce every legislation, piece of legislation that comes before us. From the B-Square Bulletin, this is a quote from the bulletin, Mayor Thompson told the B-Square she found out about the resolutions at the same time as the general public when the meeting information packet was released after 5:00 PM on Friday, March 7. These four resolutions were all developed via extensive coordination and collaboration with city staff over the year 2023. Some discussions started with the previous, oh, 2024, and some started with the previous administration, actually, before we were all in office. This is pretty unusual because a lot of legislation comes either from the administration or from council, and there's not a lot of collaboration. Just like for one example, and there are many examples of this, but an email in August 2024 from the director of planning, David Hiddle, emailed the council members on working on these four of us, the deputy mayor, and the mayor was on the emails but had been dropped. He said, "Thanks for meeting with planning and transportation staff last week to discuss the council's draft list of proposed UDO amendments. Here are the follow-up notes following further staff review. As PNT staff had already planned to bring forward language, one, updating the methodology for calculating repair and buffer requirements, and two, strictly limiting self-storage as a land use, we could absorb those two items onto our planned staff UDO amendment lift, if so desired by council." Director Hiddle goes on to give updates about what we talked about at one of our meetings for those UDO resolution updates that we were working on together. So I have more on there, I'm sorry, but I want to, I want to keep going on this. So that was really hard to understand, that quote. And after that, I had a conversation with one council member. And they told me, they voted no on introduction because they had talked to the mayor, and the mayor told them it was the first time the resolution, she had seen the resolutions, and that they were developed in a vacuum. I was shocked by that because she had been on the emails as well as city staff in the meetings, right? Later, I followed up with that council member, and I asked, did, I was like, I'm sorry, I'm just clarifying. So like, you called the mayor and this happened? And they said, no, she called me. Then this got a little more deep, right? And it's just like, it's really hard because there's like, no trust there for me. But after, after I talked to a different council member, that one said, "I asked the mayor if she called anyone, and she said she did not." So like, I, it's hard that, this is just one example of a place that like, all honesty, it just feels blown to pieces. And I do follow councilmember Flaherty in that, like, the lack of trust is so extreme for me. I want to use a no vote to show that. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Are there other council member comments? Councilmember Rallo. I suppose I can count the first, have you just had questions before? Okay, go for it. Okay.
Yes, Mike, just briefly, I wanted to say that I appreciate the administration and the controller for meeting the challenges of state legislation, changes in taxation, and reduced revenue. And I appreciate the work that she's done in navigating that. And you've also been very open and responsive to council during the budget process, and I want to extend my appreciation for that as well. I appreciate the mayor's efforts to find the proper location for a police station. I voted against Showers West purchase. That acquisition, I think, it's yet to be determined how that will play out, but I'm pleased that it is not going to be the location of the police. They never wanted to be there. It was inappropriate for them, and actually, I think it was hazardous. So I'm very appreciative of that and also appreciative of the mayor's attention to the police, the meeting their needs in other ways as well, salary and so forth. I also wanted to say that, I've forgotten what I was going to say, that on, you know, if my negative comments during the budget were mostly focused on accounting for past growth and how that affects current fees and taxes and so forth and spending, I don't think that we fully account for it. It's something that we could work on, and I think that I wanted to bring it to the attention of everyone, including the administration. If there is one thing that I think that we should reconsider in the future in terms of our budgetary constraints, that is whether or not the infrastructure that is available to us right now needs to be redesigned. I know that in best times, it may be advisable, you know, in an optimal sense, maybe to have a redesign of major streets in Bloomington. But is it something that we can afford to do facing a future of probably austerity? I think that that discussion should be had. And I've remembered my other comment, and that is that the administration has been open to increasing salaries from 2% to 2.7% to keep place with cost of living increases, and I appreciate that. That was an awesome feat, and I think that was the appropriate thing to do. In the past, we had not been keeping up. And I would prefer, after we've gone through the salary study, there were major increases last year that were needed for cost of living, I would hate us to get behind incrementally. So that was a very, I appreciate that very much, the administration. So I will be supporting this budget. I think it's a sound budget, and I want to thank the controller again and the administration for presenting it to us.
Thank you for that comment. Are there other council member comments? Councilmember Ruff.
I also want to thank the administration for what I think was, you know, a real effort at providing information when it was requested and providing it in a relatively timely way. And for what I think was compared to, certainly compared to some former administration situations, it was, it was pretty give and take. I, and for, I appreciate it. I also just want to add that I agree with councilmember Rallo that if we are really in a time of austerity, throwing large sums of money at redesigning and reengineering existing infrastructure that is serving the community arguably relatively well is not something I support or want to see. And I think it contradicts this, the austerity concerns and the uncertainty of future revenues with state laws. I just, I just cannot see the justification for these large amounts of money that are going towards redesign, reengineering, and then reconstruction, shifts and construction. Finally, I'd just like to say, you know, when councilmember Flaherty made his initial comments, he was asking about the procedure and about the five minutes and whether it be, and the clock was running, and I don't, I don't think that was fair. So I would say if councilmember Flaherty has another 30 seconds of time, I think it's fair to add because he shouldn't have been timed during asking, you know, what our process was going to be.
Thank you for your comment. To clarify, councilmember Flaherty, in theory, has another two minutes if he wanted to take a second comment, but I will leave that up to him. Are there any other comments from council members about appropriation ordinance 202511?
I'll go ahead and say something short just because I think that I kind of owe it to my constituents to say something. I also plan to support this budget this evening, but I do want to say that I appreciate the words from councilmembers Flaherty and Rosenbarger just in terms of being upfront and explaining their reasoning. I do feel as though this process has been collaborative, and I have felt like the administration has been responsive to things that I've said, both individually as part of fiscal committee comments and during the question-and-answer period of the hearings itself, both, I suppose, responsive to myself, but also responsive to other council members who have raised questions and issues, and I appreciate that responsiveness. I also understand that disappointment that councilmembers Flaherty and Rosenbarger mentioned. But I do think that the administration has tried really hard to make a budget that was a collaborative effort. So I am planning on supporting this this evening. So if there are no other comments, will the clerk please call the role on appropriation ordinance 202511?
Councilmember Flaherty?
No.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Osari?
Yes.
Thank you. That ordinance passes 7/2.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2025-12 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce appropriation ordinance 202512. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read? Appropriation ordinance 2025-12, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2026. There's no synopsis.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2025-12 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you, who is here tonight for appropriation ordinance 202512?
Good evening. John Connell, general manager, Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. Here respectfully requesting final approval. I'm here respectfully requesting final approval of the 2026 Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation budget. There have been no changes to the budget since it was last presented. The total budget for 2026 is $19,383,402, proposed tax levy of .0371. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there council member questions for Mr. Connell? Councilmember Flaherty?
I did have one, and I meant to ask this earlier in the process, and I forgot. Someone else did forgive me. But we talked early early in the budget process that the MOU that had agreed to to commit a certain amount of ED-Lit funds to Bloomington Transit and to transfer on an annual basis over a period of time, where it's sunsetting, I think, into 2027. And we're, correct me if that's wrong.
Twenty-eight, I believe.
Twenty-eight. Okay, thank you. And and I was curious for your perspective, which I don't think I got, on the impact of that. If the things that those dollars are supporting now, I know some of it was like matched dollars for federal grant opportunities for electrification of fleet, for instance. Yeah, the outlook there, I guess, with that changing, just so we can anticipate appropriately, like how that will impact transit, how that might impact city decisions on.
So previous ED-Lit funding, we've used primarily as matching funds for federal dollars. For example, in 2025, we've drawn down $24 million in in federal funding. So if you look at, we have 16 additional battery electric buses. They're a million dollars each, not to mention the infrastructure. There were two separate grant applications that we were awarded money to to buy those, purchase those vehicles. And without that ED-Lit funding in place, I doubt very seriously that we would have received those discretionary funds. As far as the 2025 and 2026 Lit funds, we've pulled those, and we're we're programming them for local matching funds for our new facility and acquisition of land. So when we set out on our strategic plan, transform BT, all those projects, we're getting ready. And and this budget does include $100,000 to upgrade that or review and update the strategic plan. But a lot of the boxes have been checked in terms of technology, the vehicles, as a result of the ED-Lit funding. So it it truly has allowed us to transform BT.
One brief follow-up, if that's okay, and thank you for your. Is any of it committed to debt service right now or or no?
The microtransit, yes, the microtransit services. So this year, we have opted to use internal funding so we could set aside the 3.8 to show the Federal Transit Administration that we do have the local funds in place. So knowing how important that was to council, we we have continued the Blink program and the microtransit program, and we've absorbed those costs internally.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Just like to give you an opportunity to reflect on federal and state budget challenges in the future and what, you know, what we might anticipate.
So the federal funding reauthorization is set for 2026. I don't have a crystal ball. I'm cautiously optimistic. The funding levels will remain pretty consistent, particularly in terms of federal, or formula funding. There has been a clear indication that, for example, the low no, the low admission, no admission programs will probably sunset or just cease to exist. But as far as the the federal formula funding, like I said, I'm cautiously optimistic that it will remain at a steady level.
And just to follow up, we've, our fleet has transitioned largely to
Correct.
either hybrid or to fully electric. Is that correct?
Yeah, over forty, over, I believe it's 42% of our vehicles now. And we have 18 total, 16, the newer, 16 new buses are 40-foot. And why that's important is they have an extra battery pack, and we're getting 12, 12 hours of state of charge. So the vehicle can be out all day. So it's been a fantastic improvement.
Great. Well, thank you for moving ahead with that transitioning while we, while the landscape allowed us to
Right.
to do so. Yeah, thank you.
Are there other council member questions? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and go to the public for public comment regarding appropriation ordinance 2025-12. There are any members of the public in chambers who would like to make a comment, you can make your way to the podium. If you're online, please raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. I don't see anybody moving in chambers. Is there anybody online with a hand raised? Okay, I'll give it another minute because at the last one, there were a couple of last-minute hands that suddenly went up. So go in once on public comment for appropriation ordinance 2025-12, go in twice. All right, no public comment today. Returning to council for any council member comments regarding this appropriation ordinance. All right, seeing no comments at this time, will the clerk please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 2025-12? Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you, and that passes with a vote of nine-zero.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2025-13 be introduced and read by the clerk by title.
And synopsis.
And synopsis only. That's what I was saying. Second.
So moved and seconded to introduce appropriation ordinance 2025-13. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2025-13 to transfer funds from the general fund to the fiber connectivity fund and specially appropriate funds, not otherwise.
What? Wait, that's so absolutely wrong that you guys are going to have to bear with me because I. We'll we'll start over with that reading of.
Yeah, yeah.
Title and synopsis of 2025-13.
Yeah. But do give me just a moment because I did something very strange here. Again, sorry. Okay, let's try that again. Appropriation ordinance 2025-13, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2026. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance approved by the utility service board in August of 2025 sets the water and wastewater budgets for 2026.
Thank you.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2025-13 be adopted. Second.
All right. If you want to state your name for the record, and then you've got the floor. Thank you.
All right, Catherine Zager, Utilities Director. Good evening. I am presenting an ordinance adopting the utilities budget for the year 2026 for both water and wastewater for final approval. The water utility budget for 2026 is $23,119. And the wastewater total budget is $34,590. Happy to answer questions. Thank you. This remains unchanged from the last presentation.
Thank you. Are there any council member questions for Director Zulik, Zulik, Zager? Any questions at all? Okay, seeing none at this time, we'll just go straight to public comment. If there is any members of the public who would like to make a comment on appropriation ordinance 2025-13, if you're in chambers, you can make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. And I don't see anybody moving in chambers. If if you want to make a comment, go ahead and come up to the microphone. So I do see somebody moving in chambers. If you want to go ahead and sign in, there should be a sign-in sheet there, and then state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, council. My name's Joshua Stockton. I do work at the water treatment plant. I did have a comment. I wanted to formally invite all of you to come take a tour soon, whether it all be together or a few of you at a time. And I would love to personally show you around and show you everything that you guys really do need to see. And I would highly recommend that you guys go to the wastewater treatment plant, and you discuss with all of our utility staff, all the problems, all the concerns, anything that we have. Because I personally feel that there is a separation. I feel like that is something that has been brought up tonight, that we do have transparency issues. And it's not just towards the public. I think it's within our own organization as well. And that's why I ask you to come, come tour. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, anybody who's raised their hand on Zoom? Anybody else in chambers then? Okay. We'll revert back to council then if there are council member comments regarding appropriation ordinance 2025-13. Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the comment. First, just a, I have toured those facilities previously, though it's been a number of years. I really enjoyed it, so plug for that. Thank you to Director Zager and and the City of Bloomington Utilities staff. And just wanted to speak briefly with respect to the board in particular, as I serve as our ex officio non-voting seat on the utility service board. Just that I have a lot of confidence in that board. I get to see them, you know, every other week, which you all don't necessarily. And I think they do a great job. It's really balanced. Like, I think diligence is a word that comes to mind. They're they're asking detailed and thoughtful questions, and they are ensuring that they follow up on things that are unresolved in the meeting, you know, months, years down the line if needed. So just wanted to share that and give kudos to the board members since I am our liaison. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Are there other council member comments? All right, seeing none, I also just want to thank Mr. Stockton for the invitation to tour. And I appreciate that he came and commented this evening. So with that, if the clerk could please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 2025-13. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you, and that passes nine-zero. That brings us to the end of our legislation for this evening. And so now we are down to the elected official salary discussion topic. So as preface for this, over the weekend, council members were asked a kind of series of questions focused on the the process last year with the ad hoc committee and some of the conclusions that they came to. And so that was released in a packet addendum yesterday. And so for this discussion this evening, I wanted to first start with statements from the mayor and the clerk regarding their thoughts on elected official salaries for the year 2026. So if we want to go ahead and start with the mayor for that, and come on forward and probably introduce yourself for the record and go ahead and share your thoughts with us on the matter.
Josh, you're tall. It's a tall microphone. I'm Carrie Thompson. I'm the mayor. I've been asked tonight to comment on the salary ordinance, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you. Given the same opportunity last year, I asked council to establish principles by which elected officials' salaries would be evaluated each year. I am requesting the same of you this year. I have run multiple organizations, and salaries are best set with a single comprehensive set of principles. Our non-union staff salaries at the city are set based on market. And while we can all agree that I cannot shop around for a new mayor's job in another city any more than one of you can run for council in another city, those salaries of other municipalities do inform at least our awareness of where we rank. The Association of Indiana Municipalities tracks those for us. And in their last ranking of salaries of elected officials, our current mayoral salary ranks ranked sixth in the state and will be seventh once Indianapolis implements their time-delayed raise. Our council ranks seventh as well. Our clerk is ranked third, third highest paid in the state. Should we go with market, I would suggest that we adjust electives for population size and scope of job as not all electives have the same level of of responsibility as their counterparts. It should be noted that once we raise salaries for elected officials, we are unable to decrease them. So it's important for the public to understand that this is a one-way trajectory, and we must be careful to understand it as such. It has been suggested that the clerk and I should get paid based on the equivalencies of department heads. I want to first note that we have three department heads that are already underpaid based on our current salary structure. Their responsibilities combined with their tenure would put them at a level that far exceeds what they're making now. And last year, we decided to cap the salaries so that the highest-paid city employee makes $155,000. Putting us into a department head calculus would be complicated, to be sure. And I'm not sure there's actually an equivalency for council. I wanted to note that some comments in the council survey indicated that the that there was a consultant used. And I will note that the consultant's advice included a recommendation to consider other Indiana elected salaries. This was very common sense advice, which was not incorporated into the recommendations. Given that we are elected public servants, and we all got into this knowing that what it would pay before we ran, my suggestion for this year is that we each take a 2.7% COLA that is being offered to the other employees. It's part of, it it's a priority of councils to establish working principles moving forward in order to restructure elected officials' salaries with a predictable metric each year. I would be happy to work on a team that seeks to set those parameters. Given that we have not done that work this year, I suggest COLA is the best way to move forward, especially given the funding realities that we are facing moving forward under SEA-1. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I also want to say that when we, after the mayor and then after the clerk goes with a statement, both of those parties are also invited to participate in the less formal discussion part of this. So we're going to move to the clerk now, though.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Clerk Nicole Bolden, and I am not going to have nearly as composed statement to start off with as Mayor Thompson did, so please forgive me for that. But there were a few points that I wanted to touch base on for this evening in terms of talking about the elected official salaries. One, and I made this point earlier during the fiscal committee meeting, I think it would be a good process to actually separate out into rather having one ordinance where you're looking at all of the elected official salaries, but to separate them out so that you have a separate ordinance for the common council, one for the mayor's salary, and one for the clerk's salary. That would allow all of you to have separate negotiations, and if there comes a problem in the future, you won't have to go through the process of dividing the question, which can be complicated. And while it has come up before in the past, I think it was in 2022 or 2023 where it was proposed, but discarded as being too difficult. I've said it. proposed, but discarded as being too difficult. I've said it a few times over the last week or so. I think that considering where we are with SBA 1, I think it makes more sense to do COLA increases, to parallel that of the civil city staff for elected officials moving forward until such time as we have a better idea of what we're doing, or until we're looking at 2028 for elected official salaries for those who are coming in after having run for office and being given a clear opportunity to state what they think their salaries should be. That will help to inform any voters or people running as to what they would like to see. I know that last year, when the Fiscal Committee was looking at different processes, I offered some perspectives on the different considerations that were made. I will continue to do so if you have any opinions about it. I hesitate, even as a board member of Accelerate Indiana Municipalities, I would hesitate to use their salary study as the guide. I think, again, going to the source materials and having all the salary ordinances to compare the numbers for, if you're looking at other second-class cities, is probably the smarter way to go, because the AIM salary study is self-reported. You can also go to Gateway and get the salary information from there. And last, two things. One, like Mayor Thompson, happy to work on a team, answer any questions that you may have. And to the point, because I saw it in the answers, we all knew what our salaries were going to be when they ran. Of course, we did. It's not hidden. It's very public. I think it's very important to have that discussion. But you do not, as a body, pass your salary ordinances over the course of your term. You pass it every year. If you weren't planning on changing the salaries, you could pass one ordinance at the start of this body's term and say, we're going to only do COLA increases for the next four years, or until the composition of this body changes. You have not done so. So saying, well, you knew what it was going to be when you ran, also knowing it can change every year, seems to be having it both ways. And again, I would like to reiterate, I am not asking for a salary increase this year. I think a COLA increase is absolutely appropriate, and I'm happy to help or participate in any further discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I think part of this discussion is to be able to do it in a less formal way than we, of course, do legislation. But we are all up here in a line, and it's really hard to see folks if you're speaking at the end of the line. So who would like to start with any comments, any reflections that you want to say about your own things, any questions that we might have for each other, or for the clerk or the mayor? Hopefully, everybody got a chance to review the survey answers. So if anybody has questions for other Councilmembers about those survey answers, like, like this is the moment. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Just looking at number six on the survey, which says, given the uncertain financial future of Indiana cities in light of SEA 1, do you think elected officials should receive at most a 2.7% COLA increase for 2026? And there were seven Councilmembers who said yes, and two who said no. So I think it's pretty clear that a majority would like to have no more than the COLA increase. So I think we can kind of start there. And then, because we do have to, you know, make a decision without having any further certainty about our revenue future, which, which looks kind of grim right now. So we can perhaps agree on that, and then move on to think about how we can further develop a principled, repeatable system for setting salaries in the future. Although, I would say, to respond to the mayor, I think the committee last year did have a set of principles. If we look at other survey answers, I don't think everybody agreed with them. But, but going back to this number six and the maximum increase of a COLA, I was one of the two people who said no. But I think I was, I was, I didn't think through it fully, because it's, if we do any further increase this year, of course, that's going to carry forward to our salaries for '27 and '28 and '29, when SEA 1 is really going to hit us hard. So I think I would change that to a yes now. So anyway, that's what I want to say.
Okay. So I think that's kind of a proposal by Councilmember Piedmont Smith to just do a COLA for our ordinance next year. And that most people agreed with that. I think I just looked through. Councilmember Flaherty, are you the other no on that?
Probably. I can speak briefly to it. I almost find it to be directly oppositional to the first question, which is, should the council create a values-based and repeatable method for setting salaries, departing from recent past practice of making minor adjustments to salaries based primarily on whatever the salary was the year before, plus a COLA? So that's saying, should we have a values-based framework and move away from just using COLA? And I think most people said yes. And then when we're asked if we should just use the COLA for this year, most people also said yes. Those seem like diametrically opposed points of view. I think my votes were consistent. That's not to call anyone out, or like, you know, like, I'm just reflecting. And I think the reason I would say is that, like, it's just the wrong question. I mean, maybe we have no increase this year. That's fine, too. Like, it doesn't really matter. I'm most interested in a values-based and repeatable method. And settling that in some way is, I guess, my highest priority. And like, the COLA seems a little bit immaterial to that, or at least to, yeah, follows it, I guess.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak to that kind of dichotomy of saying, well, we want a values-based framework, but yeah, we also think that we should only get a COLA this year? I would like to point out, question number seven was like, if you answered yes to both of those, can you talk about that? So would anybody like to enunciate that now? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I'm the one who wrote these questions, and I'm not a professional survey taker. I think what I, a creator of surveys, I think what I was getting at was, in principle, do you think we should have a systemic, values-based and repeatable method for setting salaries? Yes or no? And then the second part was specifically for 2026, since it's already October, and there's been a lot of disagreement in SEA 1 and all this stuff. Do you think we should just have a COLA? So I think you could still answer, yes, we should only do a COLA for next year. But I do ultimately want to see a principles-based, values-driven system for setting salaries. I think you could say yes to both. But, but if they contradict, I'm sorry. I'll abstain my best.
Would anybody else like to speak to that? Councilmember Ruff?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I don't, I don't see a contradiction. As Councilmember Piedmont Smith said, wasn't saying immediately, we need to do this. As a matter of fact, the follow-up question is, if you answered yes to number one and number six, what do you think's a timeline? And for one, I just passed out two to three years, knowing that this would take time to, to figure out what a values-based approach might be. And maybe then it wouldn't even work after wrestling with it for a while. But I, I don't see that they're contradictory to have answered the way that the majority of Councilmembers answered.
Any other comments about that? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, thanks. I would say I was a little confused about number six. So you just can ignore my response, honestly, I think, on that one. Because I felt like number seven, if you entered yes to number one, to numbers one and six, why do you think it's a good, oh, what do you think is a good timeline? I felt like number seven meant a one and a no went together, honestly. Because I was like, oh, maybe I'm not understanding number six correctly, I guess, basically. So I'm sorry about that, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. I do also align more with Councilmember Flaherty, just that I think that creating the principles is really important. And I think the work that was done last year, like, reviewing that work and these questions, right? Like, the first questions, are those principles? I think, I think they still hold pretty strong for me. And I, I guess, hope that if the committee continues down that path of making, I guess, a different framework, I, you know, I hope that's not thrown out and still used as valid work that got done.
Thank you. Other comments right now? I think I'm going to try to, try to bring us back, if that's possible, to that original, maybe, proposal that I mentioned, which was that the majority of folks seemed to say a 2.7% COLA increase. Though Councilmember Flaherty also just threw out the concept of no increase at all. I don't know if you meant to do that. But there's also the concept of, of no increase, because it is accurate that that question did say at most a 2.7% COLA increase. And I also think that, I remember Councilmember Daley maybe mentioning that last time when we talked about this at all, the concept of no increase. And, you know, that, that maybe you'd be okay with a 2.7% increase, but no more than that, if I'm remembering your phrasing correctly.
Yeah, I think my comments had been before we even mentioned COLA increase.
Yeah.
So it hadn't been on my mind. I, I think I would be fine either way as well. I wouldn't have a problem with no increase, but I wouldn't fight a COLA increase either.
I'm interested to know what the clerk or the mayor would think about no increase at all, not even a COLA increase. Do either, I mean, you guys don't have to answer that. I'm just curious.
Do you mean for next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there should be a COLA increase for the clerk's salary.
Mayor Thompson?
I just am going to stay consistent with what I've said in the past, which is, I think we should be as consistent across the organization as we can be. And so we did 2.7% for the rest of the non-union city staff. And so my recommendation would be, do COLA for electives. I'm also fine without it.
Okay, thank you. Do other people have thoughts on that concept of a, of a no increase versus a COLA increase? Councilmember Rallo?
Well, Councilmember Ruff is probably going to say what I'll say.
I don't know.
As he is wanting to say, if we don't give a COLA increase, then it is essentially a pay cut. So if that is the intention of anyone's salary, then I, I guess there's a discrepancy between, or there is a, they were overpaid. And so, you know, we should try to rein back, you know, someone's salary or something like that. The only time that I think the council did not take a COLA increase was during the 20, 2008, 2009 economic crisis, where we were really struggling. Fortunately, did not have to eliminate any jobs, but we made some major cuts. And one of those happened to be our cost of living increase. I don't see any need for that. I think that we should just keep up with the cost of living, as everyone should. My position.
Councilmember Ruff, did you also want to speak?
That's what I was about to say, actually.
All right. We have a ditto over there from Councilmember Ruff. Anybody else want to comment? Councilmember Zulik?
Thank you. I'm in favor of keeping a consistent approach across the board, and thus am in favor of a 2.7% COLA increase. Thank you.
Anybody else want to address COLA versus nothing? Okay. I'm, I'm not hearing anybody really advocate strongly for nothing. Is that correct right now? If anybody wants to advocate strongly for nothing, like, this is the moment to let the Fiscal Committee know this is what you, that you want nothing. Okay. We did talk about this at Fiscal Committee a little bit earlier, in terms of trying to, like, think about this survey and think about long-term and how, like, the goals of having this conversation. So one of the goals was, what should we put in this ordinance in terms of an increase? So I think the conclusion that we just came to was, as was reflected in the survey, reflected right now into discussion, and reflected by the mayor and clerk, was all the 2.7% COLA increase. So that kind of meets our number one objective from Fiscal Committee, right? Councilmember Piedmont Smith? And then our number two objective was looking into more of the future. And was that the next one, as we were going to go back to question number one? Is that right?
I mean, several of the questions do deal with, how do we come up in the, in the future, for future years, how do we come up with a systemic way of setting salaries that's not arbitrary? So yes, that starts with question one.
Okay. So in question one, where most of us seem to say, like, yes, we want to create some kind of values-based and repeatable method for setting salaries, I don't think that the clerk commented on that strongly in your, commented on the idea of, in the future, having a repeatable process based on our values, in terms of, like, a goal for future years. The mayor did say in hers, like, yes, something like that would be great. But the question is, like, what are the guiding principles, essentially? So last year, we created some guiding principles as part of that. If I remember right, last year, I don't, I don't think that the, the guiding principles, I think, were not beloved by everybody. And that's, that is also reflected in that survey, though I think the majority of people either agree or are neutral on, on them. But the, I think that that's the next question, is if part of what we want to do moving forward is create something like that. And if part of what the Fiscal Committee is supposed to do is kind of work on that stuff throughout the year, and it takes a while to figure that out. So what kinds of guiding principles or values do we want to use? If you disagreed with some of the ones from last year, like, talk about that. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I'm not responding from my own perspective. I'm responding from what I've, I've heard and read in the survey. And I think that several Councilmembers and the mayor as well have said that we should, one principle or one consideration should be what the salaries are in other second-class cities. And that was not considered last year. And I think, I don't know if it's a majority, but I've heard it from several people up here.
Would anybody else like to speak to comparisons? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I think that, I, first of all, I want to say I appreciate the work that was done on that Council Committee. But I think that its major shortcoming was lack of context and comparison. So I think that had we adopted the proposed salary for the council, would have essentially doubled our current, then-current salary. And we would be an outlier. We would be the highest-paid council in the state. Now, one possibility is other cities have a flawed process of evaluating salaries. Another is that we're an outlier because of greater workload. So more frequent, longer meetings, committee assignments, et cetera. And that, that is true. So I just want to say I'm open to considering information related to those possibilities going forward. You know, that means some very passionate comments were made, that, you know, many public servants have been underpaid. And that's generally the case in a lot of cities. So that's a possibility. It's interesting. I'd like to know more about that. I don't know. I haven't reviewed, you know, in depth, the workloads of those cities, for instance. So, so that's what I would like to see going forward. I, I think that the process might be better just left in the hands of an objective third party. So, you know, consultants occasionally evaluate salaries and determine So, you know, consultants occasionally evaluate salaries and determine on maybe a basis of, as we said, you know, but what, what that amount should be. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Other thoughts on that? I just want to say, I don't, I don't love the idea of leaving it in the hands of an objective third-party, i.e. a consultant, because then we'd have to pay a consultant. And it just kind of galls me, the idea of paying a consultant to figure out how much we're paid. It feels like kind of a, like, an unwise expenditure, especially to do on a regular basis, like, a one-time every once in a while, like the city did last year in terms of having that large assessment, and seems reasonable, but to do it on a regular basis seems a little bit wonky. Clerk Bolden, did I see your hand? Go for it.
I, I do not envy you all your task of trying to figure out what things to include in looking at salaries. I do know that last year, you looked at the salaries for all second-class cities, and you looked at their salary data for the mayor, the council president, the council, and the clerk. You also looked at the elected official salaries over the year for the city of Bloomington, for all appointees of the mayor and staff. You looked at councils by frequency for second-class cities and broke down their population and their council salaries. And there was also looking at the percentage of the mayoral salary, and you also looked at it in terms of pay per regular meeting. So, the information was looked at in a variety of different ways and considerations. So, I just, for the sake of the fiscal committee who put in hours of work looking at this information, it wasn't a case of not having the information and not looking at it. They actually took the time to review all of that information and discuss it as part of their settings. I would also include, if you are going to look at it in terms of different cities, you should also look at the different costs of living in those different cities. Because doing it straight apples-for-apples, considering that Bloomington's cost of living is higher than other cities, would be doing a disservice to, well, all of you. And there was one thing I forgot to say at the beginning of my statement, if it's not too late to add it, I do think that the council should be paid more. Although not this year.
Thank you. Are there other comments about both the need to consider peer cities, which Councilmember Piedmont Smith brought up, or other comments related to establishment of guiding principles, or the specific guiding principles that were established last year? Because I would, I would be especially interested to hear from some people who said that they did, that they disagreed with the different principles, just to get a better idea of, like, why they disagreed with them. And I guess, like, I don't want to call people out necessarily with, with this, but I know that Mayor Thompson also said that, last year, I think I remember her saying, that she shouldn't necessarily, like, agree with these guiding principles, like, as principles. So, I guess I'm really curious to understand more about that moving forward and creating a set that people are in better alignment with. Councilmember, sorry.
I don't know if I'm going to address your question, but I, I think maybe two or three, and we'll see how related they are, thoughts. I think the first maybe a broad question that we should evaluate is whether there's any mechanisms for us, whether there's any mechanism, whether there are any mechanisms for us to raise our salary in some way that's not permanent. And so, I know, and, you know, so is there, is there a way that you have, like, you know, yearly increases or tagged to something that floats with a baseline salary and code or something like that might help address some issues? And I should have said that second, because I think, you know, I, I, I would say that we shouldn't be, we don't need to be zero-sum with critique of, of a value-based statement. So if people came up with, the committee last year worked hard and came up with four statements, and the fact that, like, yeah, there's problems with each of those, maybe not collectively held, but, you know, I can say, okay, there's an issue with this claim, there's an issue with that claim, they don't sort of, they might create other inequities, they create other problems that we can't quite adjust to, you know, but, but that's not a zero-sum critique. It's not like, oh, because there's a problem with it, we should reject it, we have to keep working on it and figure out how do we actually put this in, you know, into practice. But I say all of that, though, with, with, I think, you know, I think we have to balance out, there's a little bit of a, maybe like an epistemological tension, which is that we, we started with, with a sort of assumption, and I even just phrased it with the way I phrased my first question, which is that we're creating a value-based way to set salaries, but with the generally-held assumption that we need to raise them. And so, so as a consequence, the, we're, we're almost like trying to argue, like, why should we raise our salaries? And, and some of the, some of the arguments that, that were made, or some of the claims that were made, some of the positions that were put forward, might actually result in us coming up with an answer that is roughly where we're at now. And, and I kind of feel like we reject that as a possible outcome of looking at, at those four that have been proposed. But, but I certainly just think that, that in this conversation, it's not like, reject all the things that are on the table or accept them, like, it's not, it doesn't feel super-productive. I mean, like, the, the question is just like, if, if you're going to accept any of those, how are you going to address the genuine concerns or, or, you know, the, the gaps that might exist with, with any of those proposals, if you think that those gaps exist? So, a little bit incoherent, all over the place, but, you know, there you go.
Thank you. I, I do want to say that, as, in terms of your last comment of, like, starting with the assumption that we should raise salaries, I think, last year on that ad hoc committee, because I was on it, we didn't start with that assumption. We started from the values part, and we started from the how should we assess it part. So, so first, we went to what do we care about? And then, we went to, like, how we should base salaries. So that's where, you know, it's, we based the mayor's salary on civil city, to, like, in terms of, like, the theory of what we said is the mayor's salary is on, on city, civil city, the clerk's salary on civil city, and then the council's salary on the mayor. And so, it was like, we started from that, and then we looked at the salary charts. And I know for me, it, like, you know, that sticker shock that everybody else had, like, I had that sticker shock too, like, in that meeting, like, whoa, like, we created this thing, and it resulted in this?
Mm-hmm.
Like, whoa. And, and that was where, like, I mean, I almost voted no on that recommendation because of the sticker shock part.
Right.
But ultimately, I had to go, like, well, you know, we put this effort into these principles, and, like, we started from the blank slate scratch, and this is what we came to. We didn't start with something and then fill in behind it. So I just want to clarify that as part of that process, like, I think we tried really hard to blank slate it. Yeah?
So, just, just, I mean, and, you know, I might recollect differently, but the, the reason why I hold that position is because, if you recall, even before we put together the committee, and when you read, if you read the reporting on it, at that day, when the committee was established, I said very clearly, I do not support any raises to our, to our salary, and said the exact same argument that I made throughout the rest of the time. And it, that, that was contextual statement based on what we were talking about at the time. When establishing that committee, it was clearly said by multiple members of the committee, we were just, we said out loud, and there's no problem with this position, I'm just saying that, that it, that it, it puts us in a rhetorical bind in some ways, but the argument was made very clearly, council should get higher salaries. Let's put together a committee to discuss this. So, so that, there was that starting point. Whether you could then disabuse yourself of that, I don't, I don't doubt that you could, but, but that was the context in which we were having these conversations. It was driven by increasing salaries, not by, you know, I mean, we certainly can't reduce them, nor by, let's justify the salary that we currently have.
I guess we remember that meeting just a little bit differently in terms of, like, where that origin was, but I'm also talking about when we were actually in that committee meeting room going, where do we start with this, and how do we start with this? And, and that is one of the reasons why we ultimately brought in that consultant to help lead us through it, so that we were trying, like, doing our level best to start from that, like, place of inquiry, as opposed to start with a, with an assumption on the back end. Other comments? Councilmember Daley?
Thank you. So what I'm hearing at this moment right now is that we're all pretty much unified, that this year, COLA increase, we all support that, and not fighting for anything more. I think, you know, it doesn't do us any favors to, at the end of a budget cycle, to start the conversation about what, how we want to proceed going forward for elected's salaries. So I think that we have a really good start right here. We got a really good base, especially with the salary and the conversation that we've had. And I feel like, maybe now then, this is a good time for the fiscal committee to process that information and have the conversations and keep working on that, and then maybe come back in three months and, you know, start the conversation again when we're not so close to budget time. And, you know, there's been a little more thought put into it and processing all of these responses. That's my proposal.
Councilmember Flaherty?
I just wanted to briefly support Clerk Bolden's recommendation that we separate the ordinances for council clerk and mayor.
Councilmember Rallo?
I just wanted to say that I think that the, the hearing on the proposal by the committee really didn't get a fair hearing because of the process, because we had a very contracted time. And they felt to bring it forward, it landed in a packet as a resolution, and we were, we were, you know, the committee didn't have time to, to report it for a full-throated discussion. So, so when I offered a compromise, it was really meant as a stopgap, really, to, to allow more conversation to occur, which we're doing. So, that's good. I think that's, that's all I'll say. Other than, oh, I will say that when I query Grok, it, it also thinks we should be paid more.
That took me a minute.
Well, I didn't say I supported it, I just said, you know, be aware.
Yeah. That, that would be an interesting justification. Other comments? I guess I want to address the idea of having this conversation now. I mean, as, as somebody who, oh geez, I'm the only one right now that is on the fiscal committee currently, and was also on that, that ad hoc salary committee last year. And I think that we tried really hard on that salary committee to, to come up with something, and then we got to council, and it was basically like, no, we don't agree with these principles, we don't think they're principles, we don't think it's valid. And I don't want to go through that again on fiscal committee. So, I don't feel, as a member of the fiscal committee, like, I am moving forward with any more information about what the majority of council is interested in, in terms of guiding principles or values, that they think that, or you all think, that we should base salaries on. I mean, it's clear that, okay, a majority of you think that we should have something, but what exactly is the something that we should have? And what I just heard was, oh, just, just dump it on fiscal committee to figure out. And we did that last year with salary committee, and it ended up being a big mess. So, like, not to say that we should, you know, that we're necessarily going to have any answers, we keep on talking about this tonight, but I'm just saying that without guidance from everybody about what people actually want, it, it puts a committee of four in a real bind. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I mean, I think we got some good feedback on the survey as to why there was disagreement with some of these five principles. But in other cases, we didn't. People just said neutral or disagree, and then didn't tell us why. And I do want to just address, one councilmember said, so question three was, if you disagree with one or more of the guiding principles, please indicate why for each case below. And one person said, this, this, I think this question puts anyone who disagrees on the defensive and is unfair, everybody or nobody should be asked to explain their answers. And I understand that. I guess, as the person writing the questions, I, you know, read the memo again from the ad hoc committee, and that memo explained why they put forward those principles. So I thought the argument in favor of the principles had already been made by that ad hoc committee, and so that's why I was just asking for explanations if you disagree. So just to clarify that. So in some cases, we, we did get, well, I disagree because of this, and I could understand that. In other cases, I, we didn't get responses why somebody disagreed, and especially, there were some that were neutral, that I was like, I don't know what to do with that, as a chair of the fiscal committee, I don't know what to do with that if somebody says neutral. So, I think the fiscal committee could only do this if, like, we each have conversations with each of the people who are not on the fiscal committee to really understand, because else, I agree with Councilmember Stossberg, that the four of us on the fiscal committee could agree with something, but again, it can come back and not get buy-in from the rest of the council. Although I think we do have a leg up from last year, just because we've learned some things. But it's hard.
Other comments?
I wanted to clarify a point that was made earlier, and I want to make sure I actually say it, so that it could be incorporated into the record. Sorry, that always makes me laugh. Earlier, Mayor Thompson said the clerk was the third highest-paid clerk in the state, and that she was the sixth-highest-paid mayor in the state, which is incorrect. The council is ranked sixth in the state, the clerk is the seventh, and the mayor is the tenth. Even incorporating the shift in salary for the clerk's office, that was a couple hundred dollars over COLA last year, it's still the tenth-highest-paid clerk in the state. That was it. Oh, also, I don't know what Grok is.
Did you say that the council is sixth?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, other comments? Councilmember Rosenberger?
I just want to say I understand definitely the finance committee's frustration and probably trepidation around trying to do again what was done last year. I, I mean, I do think it's somehow worth, I mean, maybe you were saying Councilmember Piedmont Smith is one-on-ones. I mean, I try really hard to, if I trust the process, I trust the outcome. And, I mean, just for me, like, an example is, I totally believe in the stadium district, but I don't like that process, and I was going to vote no on that, right? Because neighborhoods were involved. But, like, I, I just think, like, is it possible that, you know, councilmembers can believe in a process and then vote on the outcome of that process? And I think, like, that is the disconnect to me in the pie charts with the answers, that maybe they believe in the process but don't believe in the outcome. And I guess it is, like, how do we, how do we get to a place where folks can, like, the process, no matter the outcome, I guess?
Just throwing one out there.
I'm not always seeing hands down there at the ends tonight. I don't know if we're being shy or what.
All good. I think you were looking the other way, the other direction when I raised it. We talked, like, quite, quite a level of depth last year about the overall compensation framework and approach for the city, and something the mayor said in her opening remarks this evening resonated, which was, you know, that in general, kind of, the best system is a uniform one, and we should be looking at that. We recognized, and I briefly mentioned this in my survey results, that there are some things, I think there's seven attributes in this sort of, like, weighted calculation that goes into the grade determination for folks, and it has to do with, like, the stress level of the job and the level of responsibility and things like that, right? Sometimes, degrees required, professional certifications, those aren't relevant for elected officials, there were some other things that weren't relevant. But most of it could map pretty well. And we did talk about that, and, and talk about those aspects, it wasn't really centered, I don't think, in the committee's proposal. But we thought of that as something of a, a check as well, something to look at as, as, you know, helping see if this was, was reasonable based on the principles we've set for the whole city. And I wonder if that's a, maybe not, but I wonder if that's a more fruitful entry point for, you know, if, if the committee, or at any point, you know, we decide to do something beyond just COLAs. something beyond just COLAs, which ostensibly the majority of people support, you know, maybe that's a way to do it. And I, I wonder if actually, like, pretending like the council job is a full-time job, using that system of evaluation, seeing where you land, and then saying, okay, but council's not a full-time job, and then trying to be reasonable about what type of job it is and, or what type of job we want it to be. Is it a quarter-time job? Or is it a five-hour-a-week job? Is it a third-time job? And so, I know we don't actually set hours, and I think statute prohibits us from tracking hours in that way, but still, just to, again, try to use some type of systematic approach, maybe that's an option. That's all.
Thank you. And that actually reminds me of the last, I think it's the last question that I'm trying to get to, is what other considerations should go into it? And one of the things that I mentioned at that time was trying to figure out what job descriptions elected positions would have, and then how they would be assessed by the HR rubric. And I was really interested in that last year too, but it seemed like last year, it was almost like, it was, it almost felt like a magic HR box in terms of, you know, there's some program, or, I mean, I think that it was actually some spreadsheet where you literally, like, fill out the things, and then you click enter, and then it gives a result. And that, that's how it felt on the committee when I was trying to dig into, like, how are you assessing this? Because there are some ways that it just doesn't align, like, education requirements, there are no education requirements. And so, it, it, maybe if we had more time, we could make it, figure out a way for it to fit better than we had. We just did not have very much time last year to, to really dig in with HR exactly how, how they were assessing those different, like, kind of like rubric-style, you know, checkboxes in terms of those job descriptions. And, yeah. So, thank you, Councilmember Flaherty, for bringing up that, that concept. Other comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, do you feel as fiscal committee chair that you have something to go on here?
Yes.
Okay. So, if there are no other last comments from anybody, including clerk and mayor?
I do have one last comment for you all, related to the whole evening, if I may. As a reminder for all council members, you all have to sign appropriation ordinances 2025-11 and 2025-12. And I'd like to get all of your signatures this evening, including the mayor, who's already graciously agreed to sign them, so we can have all of our budget ordinances ready to go and upload into Gateway. So, if you could, please take the time to come over and sign. I would greatly appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. I think that that was a note on council schedule, which was the next thing on the agenda. So, that is a great transition. Please make sure that you sign the two documents, right? Clerk Bolden, did you say two documents? Everybody has to sign in two places before you leave the room this evening. And are there any other notes on council schedule? We have a deliberation session next Wednesday, which I believe is the 15th, with the Historic Preservation Commission. And then, our next regular session is the week after that, on the 22nd. And thank you so much. We are adjourned.[1733.33]